City of Twin Oaks Board of Alderman Meeting for July seventeenth. Please hand for Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Call roll please.
Alderman Island Howard?
Here.
Alderman Stokel?
Here.
Alderman Whitmore?
Here.
Mayor Fortune?
Here.
Okay, we have an agenda that's been posted for tonight's meeting. Uh, there is one change I would like to make. It's under item ten, Appointment to Park Committee. We are delaying that because we haven't had confirmation back from the applicant, from the applicant yet, so. We will not be discussing that, so item E. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve, the agenda is amended. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay, before we start the public meeting, I'd like to make a few comments about yesterday. Uh, we had an unprecedented rainfall yesterday. Uh, stressing a lot of the stormwater systems, I think, uh, between eleven forty-five and and quarter to one, we had over four inches of rain. Prior to that, we had at least an inch of rain in the morning and another inch of rain during the evening. And while we fared pretty good compared to some of the other communities, uh, we have had several residents that have been impacted by what happened yesterday. Uh, we were out during the storm, observing, watching, trying to keep whatever storm drains we could open. Uh, it, like I said, it does stress the weak points, so we learned a lot from yesterday. We did identify, uh, three particular areas that we want to look at to see if there's any improvement that we can make, whether it be engineering or, or just operational issues. Uh, I'm going to be meeting tomorrow morning with condominium group, uh, the board, and we are also going to talk about the stormwater, uh, the impact and some of the observations that we made, uh, which I think will definitely help improve the situation, but, uh, since we did send out, uh, April did send out today an email, uh, a very good email about the situation, and we are starting to get some feedback from some of the residents about that, so we will be checking out some of these as we get those into. But we want to be in front of this, we want to be on top of this, and we want the residents to know that we are, we are looking, uh, at different aspects of our stormwater system, so. Anyway, I just wanted to say that. Okay, I would like to, uh, to open up a public hearing. We have been given a park grant.
Planning grant.
Planning grant, yeah, I knew there was a word there, I was trying to find, a planning grant, which allows us to put together a plan to submit to the Parks Commission. Uh, and if approved, they will award us, uh, money and we will match, there's a certain percentage of match that we put with it. Those opportunities only come along probably once every seven to ten years. The last grant that we got, uh, helped us increase the capacity of the restroom facility. And we are in a position as a city right now to, uh, have a very, very good chance of getting a grant, uh, either this year or next year, so we have been looking at several options, uh, mostly focused on safety, safety issues for people coming into our park. So, we have put together a number of options and we would like to get feedback. It's unlikely that we'll be able to do everything that we have identified, but we'd like to get some feedback, uh, on different parts of that concept that may be a higher priority than others or something that maybe you would like to see changed or, or whatever. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tiffany, our, our BFA. Yep. To kind of go through what we have identified thus far.
Yes, thank you, I will stand over here, is this okay?
Yeah.
Try and talk to all of you.
Yep.
That's fine.
Um, I'm Jennifer, I'm with BFA, um, one point I want to make, uh, is if the minutes can, instead of saying park access road, if it could say park entrance, because that is applicable more so and more readily awarded as an entrance. If it says access road, then they'll think it's a road.
Just as a note, that road is park property.
Right.
Yes, yes, so I, it's not a problem, it's just naming.
Right.
Yeah.
And so I would, I, I'm going to go through just the steps of what we need to do to get the grant, um, submitted, and then Tiffany will go over the plans itself, so, um, as the mayor said, this is part of the planning portion of the grant. Um, and so during this, the grant was received for the park planning, and there are four things that we need to report on, um, the date of projects completed, final budget, including the city's portion, planning documents and report in public meetings, and the evaluation of project results, benefits and how expectations were met. So that's pretty basic. You will see Cole is an intern for BFA, he's going to be taking pictures. And so if you see him taking pictures, that's why, because we want to show proof and it's going to submit that, um, with the, with the, uh, grant. Um, for the construction grant application, for this year, it is due August thirtieth. The last day to submit is August sixteenth for review prior to the end date, so. In order to do this, I just wanted to go through what has to be submitted so that we know what we need to do and then I'll go through the timeline. Um, again, that we have to submit the, uh, proof of public input, which is why you all are here, um, and the master plan, which I've already received, the project description, an inventory spreadsheet of Twin Oaks Park, detailed cost estimate, a timeline that needs to be within eighteen months of completion, from start to completion, um, a city resolution, which you'll need to do once we get a plan that you all agree on, um, and then a detailed plan for future care, basically showing the budget, showing that you have people maintaining the park and, um, and it's, um, without full pages, so it's not, it's not, you know, huge, but the biggest thing is that we need to get, um, pinned down on the plan for us to complete it and submit it by August sixteenth for review. Another note is that phases, we talked about when we started working this up, we realized that cost is, is quite high, um, higher than it was ten years ago, whenever we started doing these parks grants. And so they do allow phasing, um, but each phase, if we do a phase now and submit it, then we can put in a grant application with the next phase, what we would like to do the next phase, um, what you all would like to do as the next phase, as long as the first phase is a complete project and that it's not dependent on the next phase, so there is that opportunity to submit another phase, um, the following year. Now, what you mentioned about the dates is, like I said, April, I mean, August sixteenth is coming up really quickly. Um, August thirtieth is right around the corner, so if we don't get everything resolved and, um, selected by then, then, then it would go till, to next year's, uh, submission.
Right. So, just to make it clear, we, we are on a very tight timeline. We had originally planned to submit next year, but we found out that we are very far, we, we already have done a lot of work that you're going to see tonight, and we felt that if we came to an agreement on this, then we can make the application for yet this year. So, if by chance, we can't come to agreement, or we feel we need to think about this some more, it's not a problem, we just submit for it next year.
Thank you. And, and so if, if we're going to go, uh, with submitting this year, the dates are, this is the first public meeting and that we will show several concepts and different pieces and get everyone's input. Um, August seventh would be the second public meeting, and that would be when a decision is final and a resolution is made, and then August fourteenth or so, we would send it to Parks Commission for review for submission of August thirtieth. So it's a very tight timeline, just wanted to make you all aware of that, and I will hand it over to Tiffany, who will give the, the views.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so I'll go through the concept plans first, um, so that we can kind of visually see what all the elements are, and then we can go through the cost estimate. Um, so we have two concept plans, um, but we broke it out into like twelve different cost estimates. Um, so some of those items are kind of on here, but, but if we, we can separate them, so that's how we kind of put twelve different options, really. So, on concept plan one, we have, uh, so it's kind of like, this is one section that we could do, which is adding a sidewalk along, uh, the parking lot area. Um, and, and so, um, this, and, and just for naming, you know, we kind of, we, we looked at this here, but really, it, it's a parking lot, it functions as a parking lot, and so that's, that's where the grant would be covered, it's a parking lot, and so that this is a drive aisle. So right now, we have, uh, parallel parking with a single drive aisle. Um, so this would be to put a sidewalk here so that when pedestrians get out, they have, you know, a spot to walk and, and cross the road and then come down the, um, service road. Um, we went with a flush sidewalk so that anybody with strollers, um, can easily get onto it. Uh, and so we would do, yeah, that would, and so then, yeah. And then between the parking and the sidewalk, because there's currently a ditch there, we would have a, uh, kind of little, like a swale almost with some grates catching that water. Um, so that would be how the stormwater would be taken care of in this concept plan. And then, just like as far as coloring, the pink is the sidewalk, uh, green is where we would take out some of the old pavement to be able to tie in, um, like little things like that, and then, uh, these, these purple items here are the grates that we would space about every sixty-five feet. Um, alright, so then the next kind of breakout that we did was turnaround. Um, this, this shaded area here would be the new pavement that would be added to it. Um, so then vehicles, when they're coming down here, would be able to turn around and then go back out. Um, it would take a retaining wall to do that. Uh, there's currently all the trash containers here, so we proposed putting a concrete pad over there for the trash containers. We may have to work with the trash service to see what their, you know, works for them. Um, and then we'd be taking out some of those bushes that kind of screen the, uh, uh, poles there, so we, we proposed a fence screening or something there, um, to accommodate for that. And then, so then the next section is the service road. Uh, this would be adding a asphalt walkway, so really it'd just be widening the service road that's already there, and then we would put a stripe down the side of it to kind of designate, and this would be the walking area, and then this would be for, uh, handicap vehicles to drive down there, uh, maintenance vehicles to drive down there, emergency vehicles are the ones that would be driving down that road. Um, this one here would, uh, require a retaining wall as well, so. Um, any questions with concept one, or we can move to concept two? And, and get through all of it, and then do questions if that works better? Okay. Alright, so on concept two, it has all the same elements as concept one, um, but it has some added features. So, on concept two here, we have widening the, uh, drive lane so that we can add diagonal parking. Um, the diagonal parking gets us a few more spaces, um, it puts us at forty-two spaces. And then so as far as like sizing goes, a typical size is like nine and a half feet wide, so we did ten and a half feet wide just so we have extra room between the vehicles, uh, for, you know, getting strollers and kids out of the vehicle. Um, and then, so it's kind of one of those things that we made it closer, you can pick up a few, few more spaces. Um, but, uh, so, so we got forty-two spaces with, with doing that extra wide parking space. Um, and then we have a twelve foot, yeah, we have a twelve foot drive lane here. Um, so that would be, it would be a single lane, um, shown on this plan. And then, uh, then we got a retaining wall here as well. Um, we show two different hatches here, so we did a cost for, since we're doing all this work here, to kind of repair the existing pavements up there. Um, so these were the areas that we thought were kind of in rougher condition, uh, so we show those as a full depth pavement repair. Um, that's where you would take out the, the whole road cross-section and put a new road cross-section in. The pavement back here wasn't, uh, quite as deteriorated, so we would, um, do a two-inch overlay on it, and so we would build this new section here and then do a two-inch overlay over the whole entire thing so that it had that uniform finished look. If, if we go with repairing the pavement, we probably want to do, uh, a more detailed evaluation of the pavement, but, um, based on just looking at photos and stuff, that was, those were the bad, those were the worst areas. Um, and then this one would still have the sidewalk, the stormwater, and then since the, the parking is diagonal parking, we put in there for doing, uh, stop bars, so, um, that, that, that's kind of an optional thing, but the stop bars, since we don't have the curb, that would be kind of helpful, and then you would space the stop bars wide enough that you could still take your strollers between them and then onto the sidewalk, um, you don't have to go up that, that step. Um, and then, so then the next one, the turnaround, uh, the only difference on that would be doing that full depth pavement repair, um, and then it's the park service road as well. Um, we got a little bit of pavement repair there and then just overlaying everything, and if we overlay it, re-stripping the handicap spaces. Uh, with the forty-two spaces, uh, we still meet ADA requirements on enough, um, handicap per total spaces. Um, so that, that was good, uh. Yeah, let's see if there's anything else. We did do, um, we didn't show it on here, but we did do some cost for, we made this two lanes. So when we get to the cost estimate, um, we, we use the numbers from here to just add like, okay, if we, if we extended this asphalt, how much would it cost to do two lanes? Um, so that was looked at as well. Um, we, we did two ten-foot lanes, um, and, and this one has one twelve-foot lane. So, that, that can all, you know, be adjusted as well, kind of like those little details. Um, so, let me see what else. Um, no, we can probably go into the cost now, that's, yeah.
Do you want me to start, which one? One, concept plan one, the beginning cost?
Yeah, let's just go to the
Summary?
Front sheet summary, yeah, page one. Um, I think there's a sheet before this one.
Oh, is there? Aha.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
And then, if we go, yeah, can everybody read that? Or do we need to zoom in a little bit?
Zoom in a little, is that better? There, current total, there you go.
Okay. Um, alright, so, uh, concept plan one, this is broken up into those three phases, service road, service road walkway, which is the asphalt path. And then turnaround area, and then the parking lot area with the stormwater improvements. And then concept plan two, this one we did without the pavement repairs, and then this one we did with the pavement repairs. And then we did another one with the adding the two lanes, so that twenty-foot wide instead of twelve-foot wide. So that's kind of how this matrix is set up. Um, so the, the service road, kind of as it progressively goes up, is about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So the, so we got construction costs, and then we got engineering and, and management, um, cost breakdown there. Uh, we have, on the next page, I, I break down the engineering as well. Um, so if there's any questions on that, we can, the next several sheets are just details on how everything is broken down. So if we, I won't
Might, might be too much detail, yeah.
So, so if you have questions, we can go to them.
Yeah.
Um, so, and then, um, so then concept plan two for that service road is going to be the same cost, then it jumps up with the pavement repairs to three hundred and thirty thousand, um, and then the lanes don't affect that, so. Uh, the turnaround area, the total on that is two hundred and thirty thousand. Um, and then it with pavement repairs jumps up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, the parking lot area, this is where the price has changes for each one. Um, so the parking lot, just adding the sidewalk would be, uh, four hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then, we could, we, we couldn't, like, there's a couple different things with that, with that cost. Um, if, if you, if the two lanes seems more important, you could still add the, it's an extra seven feet, so you still add that extra seven feet and use it for, you know, lane widening instead of sidewalks, so. Um, but that kind of gives you a rough idea of what an extra seven feet is going to cost, it's, it's, uh, half a million. Um, then concept plan two is where we do the diagonal parking, we got the curb stops in there, we got the, you know, one lane, that one's going to be at eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and then, concept plan two, that's with doing all the pavement repairs and stuff, puts us at like one point one million, and then adding two lanes is one point four million. Um, some of the costs on these, I didn't get too much into the details. Once you start getting larger scale projects like this, up to this, like, one point four million, this two million, the engineering costs are going to go down some because that percentage starts to get high. Um, but I thought this kind of gives us some numbers, and then if, if we're looking at these, we can start fine-tuning that. Um, so, uh, this one, this project right here was very similar, so this is parking lot with the sidewalk, so the extra seven feet was very similar in cost to the Crescent Avenue project. Um, so we kind of used that as the basis of it, um, for, for coming up with these estimated numbers, so. Um, the, the lengths were very similar, um, this one is a little bit less, is a little bit shorter, so. Any questions?
So, where, where, where does the grant money come in then?
So the grant money is for three hundred, uh, thousand, there's not a match, but you get points for doing a five percent match.
Oh.
Yeah. And, and then that's one of the reasons that we looked into the phasing on this, because, because the amount was only three hundred thousand, so. Like, how can we break this down into, this more sizable?
So what we'd do is, we would add this into our capital budget? Like a project, you know, if we wanted to add a hundred to it or, you know, whatever. So I think, I don't know, any thoughts?
Well, the, the grant, it seems to me, is, is, you know, for the safety and, and parking and roads. Um, there was other stuff that we talked about, you, you know, for, uh, for park improvements, electric, new electric, stuff like that. Um, would that come just at a different, um, different scenario? Not with the, not with the, uh,
Yeah.
We do already have budgeted in the capital, um, project budget for park electrical upgrades for this year.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So.
So we've got that covered, okay. Cool.
Can we hear you?
Um, so the, the question was, what's the probability of getting the phase two, uh, grant, getting a second grant? And I'll let Jennifer answer that.
I don't, I'm not going to say a probability because that's really scary, or it's going to be a menace, and then if it doesn't happen, then I'm looking down with that. But, um, I've seen it before, and I know we did it in U-City where we had a phase one and a phase two, um, and it could be spaced, like, and especially if, because it's a year and a half, we have eighteen months, so it may not be next year, but it could be a year and a half. But they, they still do, if we're still like finishing and on task, then, and we submit for phase two, then they have awarded us.
The, uh, the Grant Commission has been known to give you the grant two years in a row on rare occasion, depending upon how critical the project is. Chances are with a project like this, it would be multiple years between phase one and phase two.
But that is better than waiting the time between new applications that we would have to wait to be able to apply for something else in the park, so. We did the conversation in twenty thirteen and we're just now applying, able to apply for another grant for the park, so.
Yeah.
Maybe a higher probability there.
And that's why they don't want phase one or phase two depending on, you know, they want them independent. Because they are expecting that there will be time slots in between.
When we started talking about this, one of the things that I remember you saying was that, and we have a semantics issue it seems like now, but the, the, the emergency path into the park from the road, that it was unstable? And that we needed to do more than just resurface it?
I don't, I don't think it's, it's unstable, but, you know, when you look at, when I was thinking about this personally, okay, I looked at the service road and I looked at the walkway, the cost of the walkway going down there, and then I started thinking about John drives on that road. And Officer Weiner drives on that road, and the fire department drives on that road. And there's only three handicap slots down there, so the traffic on that road is very minimal, so there really shouldn't be that big of a safety issue of people walking down that road. The road itself, I don't think is unstable, but if you have big, heavy fire trucks going down there frequently, that would be a problem, but I don't think it's, it's all that unstable, I'll, I'll let BFA answer that.
Yeah, um, to know if it was designed for fire truck load, you would want to take a core sample, but I imagine it probably was not designed for heavy traffic, but the infrequency of it is also again, not that often, so that you might want to like, if a fire truck came down that road, you might want to evaluate the pavement kind of afterwards, be like, so, um, I don't know how often fire trucks go down there.
But I think the area of
At least twice a year.
Twice a year.
And, and that might be something that like, because if you guys do, if you're assessing all your roads, it would be something that you would, you know, want to assess as well, um, just kind of looking for that cracking and doing some, um, preventative like steel coat and stuff like that, just to, just to kind of extend the life of it. Um, but right now, it is not completely deteriorated, uh.
Yeah, it's like, if we were doing, if we were doing a heavy project down in the park, taking dump trucks down there and things like that, that's why when we did the dredging operation, we did not use that access road. We came in from Crescent to keep those heavy vehicles off the road, so I think, I think if we manage the traffic on that road, I think the road's fine. Roger?
What's the square footage of the turnaround addition?
Right now, the problem with the turnaround is, it is a, with people parking there, it's a one-way street, basically. So you have to drive all the way to the end, and then you've got a jockey around, you can't do a smooth turnaround there, you gotta
So, turnaround, um, okay, so the addition is a hundred and eighty square yards, so multiply that by
Three, so.
Nine.
Nine, so, oh, about a thousand square feet. Right.
Roughly, yeah, that would be the addition, and then the, let me see, yeah, I got the, uh, turnaround. And that, that area is based on that turning radius. And that that area is based on that turning radius software type of. Yeah, so we use the, um, same thirty-two foot radius that, uh, was originally proposed. Um, I think if we get further into design, we would probably want to do the, um, auto turn on it, just to make sure that, um, that vehicles, that's a typical size, it should work for vehicles, but we could double check that. And then the thing that we probably wanna check is the trash trucks, to make sure they can make that turn. Um, but yeah, that would be a typical size for just smaller vehicles. Um, and then, and then your bigger vehicles are still making this turn, you know, today already, um, so.
All right, is there a topo map in your in your package?
There, no, it's not.
Oh, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, what is, is there a significant elevation, right where the, right where the bend is?
Okay.
Yeah, right there where that bend is, is there a significant elevation change there off?
No, not as much right there, so, um, we we took this retaining wall to about there, and and I do have minor contours and topos, so we did, yeah, so, um, so right there, we would need to retain it, and then on this side, we retain up there, so like, right in there, we're not adding enough then.
But I mean, but is there a lot of elevation change from just the pavement down, you know, down that, that, yes?
Oh, for sure. This? Yes, yeah, so it's a good three to one slope, uh.
That's a three to one.
It is, it is, yeah, it's a three to one, and roughly twenty feet down or more.
And and do you know to the right of where the sidewalk through D goes to run?
Over there.
All the way up, all the way up to the top?
Yeah.
Right up there?
Uh-huh.
Do you know how much distance there is between the existing pavement and the MODAT right away for one forty-one?
Yeah, so the MODAT right away is this blue line right there.
So all the way up there?
Uh-huh, yeah. Yeah, that, um, so, I didn't, there's these trees here that I can presumably planted, those would probably need to be removed. Cause we get pretty close to that, so that would be something that, those like details that we probably wanna look at.
I know you guys are spending some time on this. Spending a lot of money to fix and redo a road close up to the entrance. That is, for many people who have had these, extremely long walk. You can walk all the way up and all the way down. So my question is, if you're gonna spend this much money, but ultimately it's not going to be funded by grant, you're gonna fund a lot of it out of your pocket, why not actually fix the real problem? Which is that what we need is a parking lot, okay? And if we have space between, at the top, where we have space between the right way for MODAT and the existing pavement, and all we're looking for is forty-two spots, which is roughly, by my counts, about nine thousand square foot of parking lot.
So, you're saying put parking in this area, or?
No, no, up there, so that people go half the way, and don't, and don't, don't spend any money down here at the bottom to fix a road that people only need.
I don't follow exactly what you're saying.
Do you mean by the?
I don't, and I'm, I'm.
You think by the roundabout or by the Crescent?
By the roundabout, you spend two hundred grand to build the roundabout.
Here?
Okay, then in that area, why not try to configure some of the parking that you really need, and allow people to get close, so they don't have to go so far and and then cross, across traffic? You're you're, it seems like you're spending a lot of money.
I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying.
And I know I'm not.
So, so like, parking spaces in the roundabout?
No, I'm talking about owning something different than what you've got in the plan.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
That's all I'm saying, you're spending an awful lot of money to to s- to to add, cause I don't know how many parking lots there are now, but you're not gonna add anymore than.
Yeah. Yeah.
Doesn't? You're gonna spend the money you're spending.
The the objective is not to add more.
I understand it's not, but what you're, but the problem that I see is, for so many people, that walk is a huge walk up and around.
So are we saying parking lot, like, down here?
No, up there.
By the roundabout, right?
Parking lot, right, instead of the roundabout, instead of the roundabout, do a parking lot?
Possible, all I'm suggesting is, that with the money that you've got that you're spending, okay? Do you do visit, was it a good idea to create what is essentially a difficult access into the park for some people?
The problem that I have with that, Roger, is that's a sledding hill. That 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 is that is very steep.
To try to fit a parking lot in here, you mean?
To try to fit a parking lot in there.
Yeah.
We do have the cow pond area, but again, you you, you know, you're you're cutting the walk by a third, maybe.
Yeah, and I thought we couldn't have anything too heavy on that anyway.
I just remember the times that I, a few times I parked over there.
Yeah.
By the time you walk, especially if you're not down where you're, where the bend is, if you're way down here, it's all the way up, it's all the way down.
Yeah, it's a good walk.
And for a lot of people, since we can't, you know, many times got across the surface anymore, that's our only option.
So just to visualize it, if you zoom out. Maybe, okay, so, if we, this this whole area here was forty-two spaces. So if we take two hands, and then we move it over here, it's gonna take up that much room for the parking spaces. So then you would, you would, you would scrunch it up into there, which would require more pavement over in, like, so you would be kind of cutting out a chunk into there of doing pavement.
I mean, I'm not trying to use to redesign it on the fly.
Oh, no, I just wanted to visualize it.
I was, I was quite, I was quite confused. And we're gonna spend that much money. Making the park more accessible for people by allowing them to get closer is something that could be considered.
Yeah, first of all, when you're looking at one point seven million dollars, that that's something that, that's a wish. You know, that's a wish. They're gonna give us three hundred thousand, we're gonna put maybe a hundred with it, so we're talking about a project that's four hundred thousand, we're, you know, it's not gonna do a lot. I think, at best, right now, the way I'm looking at it, might do the turnaround and a little pavement improvement. You know, uh, but I agree with you, if you're gonna do a two million dollar project, then solve the problem.
Solve the problem, don't, 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 if you add two lanes just for people to drive on, you haven't cut their walk at all. Which you're talking about, is that influencing you to the park?
No, that makes sense. Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that I visualize it, so I can come up with an idea.
I was trying to get you to, if you all of a sudden draw new ideas on the fly, that was not the point.
No, that's what I do.
Two million dollars is a lot of money.
We've, we've kicked around parking lot at the board level, a lot. Uh, there's space behind the bell house, for example, to put a parking lot, but number one, we don't, we don't wanna add more parking spaces because we're overcrowding the park. Okay, number two, it's still a long walk down. You're not shortening the walk. Now you're making everybody walk the whole way, yeah, yeah. So, that didn't make it, that didn't make any sense.
The cow pond may not be ready to build on. No, it's still, it's still, the cow pond is still settling.
Show them what we mean by cow pond.
Oh, yeah, so this area right in there, uh, is where the material from the lakes was dredged into, um, so.
Oh, right here.
That was an old dried up cow pond, so we filled it up with the stuff from the lake, and that's gotta settle for several years.
Yeah, and it's, it's stability would take some geostric reports, the, yeah, the the best probably use to go that are more like.
Light use.
Light use, yeah, pavement trails.
And 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 I can see that that's a creation of more ruined roads, more bad paths, it's an expensive project. I I thought maybe if you're really gonna spend a two million dollars, putting more of the money up at the top, as opposed to closer to the street, made more sense.
Yeah.
I'm done, sorry.
Roger, it sounds like you'd like an escalator.
You know a skylift would be great.
That would be awesome.
That's okay.
You just do a zipline, it's got an elevation.
A zipline?
Yeah.
Good, good for residents, good for tourists?
Yeah.
Is the grant about fixed, no matter which option we choose?
Yeah, that three hundred thousand is a fixed number, it's fixed.
And it's not guaranteed that we will get the full amount.
Oh, that's.
Three hundred is the maximum amount.
Yeah.
What's the probability of us?
Any other comments?
Oh, yeah.
What's the eighteen percent of what's started on here?
Oh, okay, so that was, uh, so we we use the Crescent Avenue project, kind of it is is an example. And so that could be more or less, that one had a lot of right of ways, so I tried to take right of way out, but that's a lot of like city engineering administrative kind of like putting together bid documents. So, yeah, we can look at that breakdown. So the, the grant, uh, does nine percent, and that's just for putting together a plant set, is what that is. Um, and then the grant does six percent for construction management, so that's oversighting that. Um, then, because this one's got a lot of retaining walls, I put in there some costs for retaining walls, cause I I knew some rough numbers, but we would get subs and we would get quotes. Um, but then the administrative is just bid documents, um, just kind of city engineer work. Um, so, in in one of those things, it could be something that you totally separate. I know we, we we talked about that on the Crescent Avenue project, you know, separating out the city engineer work versus the the project work. So that's, that's really what it is, is that, um.
So what used to be ten percent, I'm saying.
Does that make sense? Yeah.
No, ten percent was always the contingent.
Contingence, yeah.
Contingence, yeah, and like.
Yeah, not small, okay.
Yeah, so like, bigger cities that have a city engineer and have public works administrator, um, they, we would see that relates to them.
Right.
They would contact utility companies, they would do a lot of that, raise work, and the N S D permitting, um,
Yeah.
and and just a lot of, it's it's a lot of that kind of late work, so.
I thought, I thought that the city contribution was always twenty percent. Has that been lowered?
This, and and, and I will pull it up here in a second to verify, but the match is not required, it's just that you get extra points for.
Okay, because I think, when we did the the comfort station, it was a twenty percent match, eighty twenty, yeah.
Eighty twenty.
Yeah, I'm gonna check, but like, a lot of the grants are, but they they do all the different parts. Does that make it to your question?
Yeah, but, what you said is, if we're a large city, then, uh, would be the cost incurred by our staff.
Yeah, so it'd be like, if you had a.
So we have the subcontractor?
No, so like, if you had, if you had a staff engineer, that would be, you know, a hundred thousand plus benefits per year. Um, and so then if you take our fees for the projects that we work on and and divide that up, it it comes out to less than that.
Maybe donate that, Jen, that would help us.
Joe, do you have any?
I could do.
Comments, I see, I see a lot of thinking going on back there.
No, I'm just, um, I'm just trying to get caught up from, kind of in lay, that you guys probably already talked about a lot of stuff, but I wasn't concerned, safety is my number concern, the whole thing, but.
Yeah, and I did really.
These numbers, like.
No, we could talk about that more, ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I did hit on why this improved safety, um, so the, the the sidewalk was to get, you know, the strollers out of the driveline, so that was one safety feature. Um, the, uh, turnaround is because we kind of got that, you know, people backing up issue, and that kind of weaving in and out, and that confusion, so that would help the traffic flow, um, and so those were kind of the, the big, the safety bench was.
So I think, in my mind, the two options that you really have to weigh against each other is the, the benefit of that turnaround, or the benefit of the sidewalk along the parking spaces.
Or just the widening of the roadway, cause we talked about that being a less expensive way to get some more pedestrian space would be just to widen that road, that park, let's call it a parking lot, not a roadway, parking lot coming in, so that there's more space for walking in cars.
So if you widen the roadway, could could cars pass, a car coming in, the car going out?
Yeah. Yeah, you would have, uh, so, let's see, we added.
Cause right now, that's a challenge.
Yeah, so if you add seven feet, seven feet would be a narrow lane for, like, a vehicle can can get in seven feet. It's maybe one of those things that you like slow down the staff, the person that pulls it aside, and the other person goes around you.
Yeah.
But with an extra seven feet, you do have enough room for that. Yeah.
Would you still do the turnaround extended or? And if if you had two lanes, you would still do it?
The, and then that would just be a cost thing, cause that would be the, like, seven to eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's probably a little aggressive.
Projects.
Phase two.
Yeah, that's phase two. So, the question is, which would you do first, the seven foot or the turnaround?
Yeah, you could, I wonder, um, do the turnaround, because you guys are wanting to be a little bit more than that, and widen a portion of the road, not the whole thing. Um, cause I know there's the idea of like, doing like a bump out, and like, it would be one of those things that would have to stand alone on its own, and then you could do more widening, um, in sections, um, we didn't quite break out that, but we could, yeah.
Are there lighting upgrades in any of these numbers?
No. Yeah, I guess, uh, numbers, kind of the things in are, uh, mobilization, temporary constructor, temporary road control, those kind of standards, uh, tree clearing, um, kind of just removing a topsoil brush, and then, and then actually some tree removal, depending on which project, um, asphalt, uh, signs, utilities, the main utility in this area is electric. Uh, we don't have to work water, looks like it just goes to bell house, but I didn't see anything for water. That would be further investigation, but from what I can tell on the stuff I had, electric seemed like the the main thing. Um, this pole wouldn't be affected, but the guy wires would, and then there's electric that comes all the way down this road. You guys aren't, I don't know how extensive your electrical thing is, remove it.
Yeah, true.
Um, and then the stormwater is a good portion of it, uh, with this one widening over here, covering that ditch up, would be adding the stormwater. It was kind of a wash, you could add on this side, and then you do a retaining wall, or you do this side, and you do stormwater, and the cost are close. Um, let's see, site work is then the side of the concrete, the earth work, uh, putting in the technical warnings, uh, the trumpeted domes for the media, crossing here, here, and then down here. Curve stops, retaining wall, the, cause this doesn't need a full retain wall on this side, but the curve is gonna be like a two foot tall curve, so you would just kind of make the curve taller there. Um, and then we did not know if there was irrigation in this area, so we did, we added four to five hundred for that. We might have kind of just been unknowns.
I know, I've.
Okay, I don't get that, sure, there's not, we did see some lane, um, that had irrigation kind of up to here.
Yeah.
But we didn't know how far that extended, so it doesn't.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
Um, striping, uh, saw cutting and overlaying, pulled out, or the I listed everything off of the most expensive, so the other ones just have pieces pulled out. Of the things that we considered, we're looking at that cost. Um, it is, it is conceptual, so it's, it's, there's unknowns, so we tried to be up the high side to kind of capture some of those unknowns that we may run against. So.
So you were saying there could be a scenario where we are able to do the turnaround and maybe partial widening, like, maybe just these first areas, cause that's where you would not want to be
Yeah.
stuck that close and have to back up all the way, but there, at least, you could make that maybe two lane wide.
Right. Two lane wide, yeah, up in here, um.
Yeah, and then it could be added on to later, if we wanted to phase two widen the entire parking lot. Drive lanes to the two, two lane traffic both ways.
Yeah, and then that, that could be kind of one of those things, like, all right, we'll, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, and then we could determine the length of how long we can widen.
How far we can get with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think we've been talking about this for ten years, probably, haven't we? Um, yeah, but but our goal was just safety, that that's it. And, um, you know, there is some cars passing, uh, is is a challenge, because the hill drops off so severely on one side, that if if a car got too close to that, it it would go over, so, but, um, yeah, I I think if we could make the parking more safe and and a better walkway, that would be fine.
So you're saying wider?
Yeah.
Higher priority than the turnaround, is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
And I wonder if we could take the turnaround around the cell tower, one lane.
Oh.
Just take it one lane, a circle around the cell tower.
Something about.
That is, yeah, we get. That is, yeah, we get on to the Presbyterian church.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really?
Yeah, right up in there.
I mean, there's probably a bit of property, but, but then you would
Yeah.
come into that, that road that's there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that was there.
They may lease us the ground to do that though for nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they, did they lease for the, yeah.
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 They already leased us property.
Yeah.
Right?
Um, MoDOT's got a base in there, I don't know how far out their easement goes, so that'd be something to look into.
Yeah.
They have all that?
They, they have a, um, detention basin, so, uh, you can't really see it on here, but you drive by it, it's a good side.
Yeah, it's right up in here. Yeah, right up in here.
Ditch and, uh, there's a big size pool, um, and so it probably was really neat to see Tuesday without water, it'd be filled up
Yeah, full.
and then it drains out real fast.
Yeah.
Like a bathtub.
Russ, uh, the, the things that you identified potentially in the park as a result of the flood, flooding, any of those things that we need to be thinking about in terms of major?
Things I identified in the park.
You said you were down in the park and there's a couple of things you noticed that, are, are any of those going to?
Actually, actually, the, uh, the park did quite well. The, uh, MoDOT basin, I'll do this real quickly because this is off subject, but, uh, the MoDOT basin was full. Stream coming down to the park was handling the water very well. The weak point in the park is, if you can imagine, behind the dam area at the lake. You know where I'm talking about?
I know.
There's a storm drain down there.
Right.
And that storm drain gets all the runoff coming down from that rock stream. And also it gets all the runoff coming off the sports field now. And we have to make sure that is not blocked. That's one of the things that's going on our maintenance list, to make sure that is routinely checked, because that is a vital point. If that gets blocked up, it floods out all the houses in back of it. That was the only weak point that I saw in the park.
That's good.
The lake did really well, it, it, I was really surprised, it, the park seemed to handle it quite well.
The, the creek through the condos.
Yes.
Was a raging rapids.
It was to the top.
I was seeing that, huh?
Yep. We learned a lot yesterday. Any other comments or input, and board members?
No.
I think you have expressed a preference of widening the road. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, it came from Officer Weiner and, and, uh, talking about cars trying, trying to pass each other now.
Yeah.
That somebody's got to back up, and people aren't good at that, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
Especially for a long distance up the hill.
Yeah, and I think the reality is we'd like to do all these things because we think it would work really well, but
Sure.
One point seven million dollar project for, for this, uh, with the city the size we are is a big one to take on.
Yeah.
And we're gonna get three hundred, that's it probably. Yep. We have other projects that we need to do. Dennis, any comment?
I kind of like the idea of the diagonal parking, but I don't know if that takes away the possibility of the two-way street. Is it in the middle of the two?
Or is it on one side?
Yeah, um, so I had two costs on that, uh, the diagonal one twelve foot lane was the one point seven and then the diagonal two ten foot lane was the, the two million.
Yeah.
Was that for the whole project though, or just adding the parking?
That was, oh, that was for the whole front, we can throw that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, let's go look at the, uh, which one is it on?
Yeah.
How much would the diagonal parking take up of the seven feet, all of it?
Of the, oh.
How much would be left?
Oh, that's right, if you don't do the sidewalk, you still have that seven foot.
If we just. Yeah, or didn't do the turnaround either, you know, just, just widening and changing to diagonal parking.
Yeah, so. Just widening with no pavement repairs, um, with the diagonal was eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. Um, and that includes the seven foot wide sidewalk. Um, so you could do it without the sidewalk, that, um. That does add spaces, it goes from thirty spaces to forty-two spaces. Um, another thing is you could just hit the thirty spaces and then so then your widening wouldn't be as much also.
Right. Right. Mm-hmm.
Um, so we could start pulling things out of that eight hundred and seventy-two thousand for the diagonal.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would pull out stormwater, which is about a hundred thousand, that's kind of a big ticket item.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that only gets you one lane, but it gets you diagonal parking.
So diagonal parking without two lane traffic, just the one lane and.
Without.
It's a twelve foot lane, um, so it's a little bit, I should measure, I think it's a little bit wider than we have today.
Right.
So basically, if we want to go to two lane traffic, we need to stick with the.
Parallel parking.
Parallel parking.
Parallel parking, yeah. Then we can go to.
Which, it's more inconvenient, not quite as safe, but safer.
And how, how deep are those when you make, uh, diagonal?
They're eighteen feet deep.
Eighteen feet deep, so.
Yeah, so we could look at, um.
I'm just thinking like, if there are shorter cars parked there.
Yeah.
You've got some extra width from the depth of that diagonal parking where you could sneak by if you.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be two dedicated lanes, but there, maybe it would be wide enough to get two cars through in a pinch where you're backing up.
Yeah, big truck.
Well, true, yeah, true.
You're gonna have that.
Yeah.
If you could designate, designing the compact.
Compact car parking, yes, up at the front.
Yeah. And we want the compact up at the front, and then that.
Truck's got to park at the end.
But you wouldn't know until you go all the way up there.
Well, that's true, that's.
And then you'd have to jockey around it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Need some signage.
Right.
Compact parking up front.
So. We, we are at a point where I think we need to decide whether we want to look at this more, which means we're not going to make this application date. Or if we can agree on a first part of this project to go with.
There.
Yes.
If, there is no match required, you get points if you have five percent or greater.
Okay. So if we go with, if we go with road widening with parallel parking, where that, that's the way it's going to be, I mean.
Right, so if we went with road parking, or road widening and parallel parking, we would be taking away the stroller lane? Am I right?
Yeah. We'd be making it easier for them to open their doors and get in and out.
Get wider spots, basically, to be able to navigate, but you.
Right.
And it would be a wider lane than what it is existing because of.
And you'd still be.
But you wouldn't have a dead.
Walking behind cars.
You wouldn't, yes, yes, you would. So, I, I mean, I'll just say that like, it's been a long time since I had to do that. But, um. That bothers me more, like, I like the idea of a sidewalk because it gives you a safe, separated space.
Right.
And share the road is all nice and good until my kid is three cars ahead of me and he doesn't know that those brake lights mean he's pulling out. Right, and I realize that a lot of people have the beep beeps and all of those things, but like to me, that's the, the best safety thing is to give them a place to be that isn't the road.
Sidewalk.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, I mean, I like that better, I like, I'd rather maneuver while in my car with my children in my car.
Yeah.
And have to back up, rather than need to maneuver my children behind cars that could come out.
What's the cost of the sidewalk only?
The sidewalk one is the concept lane, it's the, uh, four hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Yeah, that's getting more in the ring.
Sidewalk and stormwater.
Yeah.
If, if the board decides that they, that the parking lot widening is the thing that you want to do as the highest priority,
Because you could always widen it.
could we then go back and before public hearing number two, have a couple of options for what that widening looks like? So either it's, like we talked about, the asphalt widening and a striped lane for the pedestrians or it's not widening the road and adding a sidewalk, just as two concepts.
We wouldn't be able to submit in time.
Okay.
Because we'll have, they have that for, for this year.
Yeah, it would still be for next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we'll have to get that resolution.
I don't necessarily want us to be under a time crunch for this.
No, I don't, I don't like that either.
Yeah.
No, so.
And I mean, I'd like if, if we all came in here and we're like, yeah, that's exactly what I want.
Yeah.
Sure, that would be okay, you know, but I feel like we're not ready.
But we don't. We're not.
Yeah.
Like.
No, we're not ready for that at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see a few more.
So I think we're narrowing it down, but we're not there yet. So I think we're not going to make that.
Okay.
And that's okay, because originally we didn't plan to make that date.
Right.
No, this is like.
Yeah.
This, this was an opportunity that presented itself.
Exactly, we'd all walked in and it was like, yes, perfect, yeah. And that's not that you guys did anything wrong, it's just that we probably.
Yeah.
I don't think until I sort of saw the things, I was like, yeah, no, like sidewalk, like that to me is, that's safety.
That's right.
Whereas the other things are, uh, but if I have all my kids in my car and my car gets hit, that sounds the same as if my kid gets hit, right? So.
Okay, so I think, I think we're all in agreement that we want to do some further study.
We need to, we need some more.
Here, I was gonna, I, I had with the current lane, thanks for the throw. Um, the current lane is fourteen feet wide.
Okay.
So, um, two ten foot lanes would be adding six foot, which is close to the sidewalk, which is what we kind of looked at. But just kind of to give you an idea of that, um, sizing, right, now you have fourteen feet, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other thing too is if we apply next year, we may, we're gonna have another really good year, so we may have more funds to put with. That would be something else to take into consideration as well.
And note that, I mean, and that we don't have the time crunch for the planning grant, but we do need to submit what was decided.
At this meeting.
For the planning grant.
Yeah.
Not, I, yeah, but it doesn't have to be at this meeting, but for sure, at some point, we need to say this is what we want to submit as our plan that we came up with for the planning.
Right.
And then also the planning grant covered, uh, three cost estimates, so.
Will we go into something more?
Yeah.
I hear you.
We were able to squeeze in twelve, so.
Yeah, twelve, geez, yeah.
And we still can't get it.
Right.
We're such trouble.
Okay, anything else? If not, we will close the public meeting, thank you. Any citizens in comments at this time? Anything on? Do we, do we get feedback there?
We do, yes, let me check, no, we have no comments.
No comments? Okay, we have the consent agenda, uh, Board of Alderman, regular meeting minutes from six twenty-six. Bills list from June twenty-second to July twelfth, credit card statement for June. Any comments or discussion? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, consent agenda's approved. Report of committees, Officer Weiner.
All right, for the month of June, we had twenty-four radio calls, a hundred and forty-six self-initiated, which generated level reports. We had twenty-three traffic stops. We had one felony arrest for property damage and one summons issued for public drunkenness. We had six auto crashes, a day like Big Ben one forty-one, two at Varmac Station, and then on the parking lot. We had five crimes reported, um, three which were stealing from businesses. One was the property damage in the park, and the other was the pub, public drunkenness. Um, on the bike, I logged seventeen point six hours. Questions?
Church? Church?
Uh, that was this month.
Okay, okay.
So that'd be on the next one, so.
Okay, we did have a break-in at the church.
Really?
And we had a break-in of a trailer too this month, so. Activity seems to be increasing a little bit. But the church has been solved, that's.
Church, yeah, was solved that day.
Yeah. Same as the park.
Was there some kind of, no, I can't ask you this, you don't answer me. This is some kind of pursuit or something through Twin Oaks? I, I, I just, I thought I read it offhand, and it, it, it wasn't specific to, uh, you mentioned one forty-one of Big Ben, but it was the Illinois, Illinois.
Not that I'm aware of, but not that we got involved in.
Okay.
Uh, a lot of times when we come over from out of state, we just monitor, um, our policy, we don't necessarily get involved unless it meets certain criteria. So we may have been monitoring it, but not getting involved.
Just wondering if the cameras were working?
Uh, if it was on one forty-one, the, the park cameras would have caught that park camera here.
Oh, okay.
Thanks. Anything else for Officer Weiner? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, old business, RFP for leaf vacuuming.
Yeah, that's what we talked about at the last meeting, um, so I just updated the RFP from last time and I'm going to send that out the same way that we did the, um, sidewalk project through the site improvement organization, because they also do landscaping, so I'm hoping that we'll get, um, several bids this time.
Yeah, with the, uh, with the recent stormwater studies we've been doing, uh, we want to make sure, although rain is not necessarily a big problem that time of the year, but it could be. We want to make sure that they also clean the gutter, the, the curbs when they do that, instead of leaving, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's in there, it says right there, pass means that leaves will be picked up at each resident's front curb line as well as the leaves in the street gutter.
Yeah, well, we haven't, we haven't gotten on them about that before.
As you move down the street. Yeah.
They were getting a little lax with that last year.
Yeah. So that'll go out tomorrow.
Okay. Takes us to new business, bill number twenty-four dash eleven, ordinance amending the Twin Oaks Municipal Code Section. One hundred dot, one hun, one ten dot one hundred pertaining to meetings of the Board of Alderman, that's changing the time.
Yeah, that was just what we discussed last meeting and you all proposed that we change, change the meeting time to six thirty instead of seven, so we just have to change it in the code.
Is there a motion to adopt bill twenty-four dash eleven?
Should we read that again?
No.
It's an ordinance.
Oh, it is an ordinance, okay. Second reading and ordinance amending Twin Oaks Municipal Code Section one ten dot one ninety pertaining to meetings of the Board of Alderman.
Motion to adopt bill number twenty-four dash eleven, is it eleven?
Yeah.
Yes, eleven.
Yes.
Second.
Call roll.
Uh, Alderman Eisenhower?
Yes.
Alderman Stokel?
Yes.
Alderman Whitmore?
Yes.
Okay, bill twenty-four dash eleven becomes ordinance twenty-four dash eleven, vote of three yes. Zero, no. Bill number twenty-four dash twelve, ordinance amending the Twin Oaks Municipal Code, repealing section one thirty dot one fifty, opting out of the sales tax holiday. Discussion?
This one's for Paul, if he wants to say.
Paul, you want to, anything to say?
Sure, like we talked about last meeting, um, you, as of twenty twenty-one, with the passage of the use tax for the ability for cities to have a use tax, uh, part of the compromise was for, uh, state legislature at least, their compromise was that cities can't opt out of the sales tax holiday anymore, and so no use having that on the books anymore. And it's coming up, August seventh or something, so get ready to go, chop in the weekend after that.
Further discussion? Bill twenty-four dash twelve and ordinance amending the Twin Oaks Municipal Code by repealing section one thirty dot one fifty, opting out of the sales tax holiday.
Motion to adopt bill number twenty-four dash twelve as presented.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Eisenhower?
Yes.
Alderman Stokel?
Yes.
Alderman Whitmore?
Yes.
Bill twenty-four dash twelve becomes ordinance twenty-four dash twelve by a vote of three yes, zero, no. Bill number twenty-four dash thirteen and ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four budget and ratifying all related prior expenditures. Dave?
So we looked at, um, the two thousand twenty-four budget through June and. And, uh, you may wanna take over what exactly we're doing here. But, uh, our main, uh, focus was the capital improvements. And some of them were budgeted last year, ended up being paid for this year. Uh, some, a couple of items, uh, that weren't budgeted, uh, need to be put into the budget. And, um, and also, we, uh, needed to, uh, look at the estimates. Do you wanna go through that?
Yeah, so the North Bridge waterfall pond refurbishment, that was in last year's budget, and we didn't get it done until the spring. So that had to be, we've reallocated for this year, so that's the thirty-four thousand dollar change, that's already been completed. Um, the welcome street signage were the signs that we ordered, we still haven't gotten them in, but they have been paid for, as far as I know. So we're waiting on those to be delivered. You have them?
It's been paid for, but we put half there.
Oh, half town, okay, so we hadn't paid for the whole thing, but that's the budget for that. Um, the other things were, um, the change that we made was adding some engineering. Uh, some money in the budget for the, what we're calling here, the Hart Dog Lane Park Access. But that's what we just talked about, was the cost that we will incur in getting that municipal park grant that we didn't have in the budget. And then, um, the other thing was engineering that we'll need for the Boli entrance improvement that we're talking about. Going out to bid for this year, that may, probably, likely won't be constructed until spring. But we, we are incurring some costs for that this year, so. So that was it, not a substantial increase, but, and some things came out too, we took out the, um. We had like forty thousand dollars in there for Crescent Road repair. So I don't even remember, I was on the board, and I don't really remember when or why we put that in there. But was to evaluate if we were going to do a rebuild on Crescent Road, but clearly, we're not gonna get to that this year with all the other things we have going on.
We did a, we did a, uh, patch over there on some of the cracks. Half of the road, probably. There may need to be a little bit more patchwork, but. And maybe a little bit of asphalt in one area, but I didn't see forty thousand dollars worth of work over there.
Right, and I think that can just come out of like our road maintenance, that's not really a capital project, so. So that's kind of the overview of the changes.
Yeah, and the Crescent Road numbers, um, from the original budget seem to be.
Yes, they stayed the same.
Stormwater.
Yeah, and notice that we do have the twenty-five thousand dollars in there for the park electrical upgrades, that's what we budgeted for this year. So we still plan to get the things done that John has identified as high priority in the park.
So in that increase of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Like I said, some of that had been budgeted last year and needed to be re-budgeted. But otherwise, budget looks, uh, pretty much on track, both on expenditures and the revenue side.
Any other questions? Bill number twenty-four dash thirteen, ordinance amending twenty twenty-four budget and ratifying all related prior expenditures.
Motion to adopt bill number twenty-four dash thirteen.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Eisenhower?
Yes.
Alderman Stokel?
Yes.
Alderman Whitmore?
Yes.
Bill twenty-four dash thirteen becomes ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen, vote of three yes, zero, no. Finally, a resolution, twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, approving and authorizing the mayor to purchase cameras for the park.
So this is, you know, we had the vandalism in the park, and so we have been without security cameras down there now, since that happened over a month ago. So this is the proposal from our IT firm, the Brainmill, to both upgrade and get us, um, better. Equipment and put them in less accessible locations, so they'll be more tamper resistant.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen?
Uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four twelve.
It's thirteen, actually, sorry, yeah.
It got changed.
Yeah.
Second.
We run a roll.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, with three yeses and zero nos. Okay, appointment of new Alderman to fill vacant seat, okay. I am pleased to inform the board and have informed the board in the past. That we had two residents step forward willing to fill this position. And two, what I feel are very qualified individuals. I didn't feel that we needed to have them debate each other or tell us all about their qualifications. Either one, in my opinion, would do an excellent job in this position. And we do have to have this board discussion, uh, about the position in public. So, yeah, it's, we can't go into the room and talk about you guys, so we have to, we have to discuss this in public. I would, uh, since we do have, uh, such qualified people and people that have been serving the city, and we know them quite well. Uh, I think the board really needs to focus on what's the need of the board in filling this position. More so than, than the individuals, because they're both qualified to do it. And what do we feel we need to fill out and, and, uh, complete this board the way it should be done? So I'm gonna open, open any discussion here that we have, and we'll go from there. Probably ought to name the candidates.
You wanna make them stand up?
Make them stand up and talk to us? Roger Loshi, of course. Joe Cruz. Roger's, uh, chairman of planning and zoning, Joe is currently a park chairman.
Um, I forgot what I was gonna say. Um, I, 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 I think that it's, uh. It's odd to have to fill a position like this, you know? I don't think we've ever done this, have we? Not that I can remember, anyway.
No.
You know, I, I guess when I was on planning and zoning with Roger, I, I was always, uh. In awe of how ready he was for the meetings and, you know, how, how they moved along. And he, he didn't, uh, uh, didn't put up with, with too much.
Shenanigans?
Shenanigans, he just moved along, so. And, uh, also, I've known Joe since he's been with the park committee, so.
You're telling me they're both qualified?
We need five Aldermen.
This has been preparing for this for weeks, yeah.
You know, I don't prepare for anything for me. I honestly, um, I know both of you, and I think both, I think either of you would be great for this position. As, as qualified as you both are. The only, I have two things, one, I'm on P and Z, and the idea of you not being on P and Z would really be difficult for me. Um, because you run it very well, I mean, you really, really do, you're informed, and you, and that is not an easy committee to run. It's very tedious and, like, how do we get through this thing? But also, like, I, since I've been on the board, there hasn't been a single person from Crescent side of the city. And so for me, that is something that I think would be a benefit. Is we don't have representation, at least, I mean, I, maybe we did years ago before I was on, I'm sure that's true, it's gotta be true. But I feel like that would be, there's so many of us in our little area, that I feel like that's, that would be the one. Positive thing for me that, since we get to pick somebody, we could, we could choose.
Yeah.
So, you know, so that, that is my, my leaning, even though I hate to say it, because if I still have kids, the ambassador doesn't like me, I'll be really bad. But my leaning is, is, you know, towards Joe, mostly for that, bringing it all, you know, together.
Yes.
You have to say something, Dennis.
I deeply appreciate both of your dedication and involvement in the city up to this point. I think you make a point about geographical representation, which makes sense. I don't know if one position would be harder to fill than the other. If we chose one of the persons. I think it maybe might be harder to do P and Z.
It is hard.
There's going to be some, uh, future needs, I think, uh, the other candidate would be perfectly suited to. So I can support Joe for that.
Okay. Any further discussion? I, uh, see, Roger, you just do too good of a job, you're, what you're doing. My thought in the past has always been that I would like to see more diverse representation. On the board. I've even thought about dividing little bitty Twin Oaks into wards so that we would get there. But, uh, I think based, based on what I'm hearing, I'm gonna put Joe Cruz in forward as, uh, my nominee. To fill the Alderman position.
Need a motion or something?
Yes.
Yes. And then did one of us make a motion?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it, so, the way it works is the, yeah, the mayor makes the appointment, but it's with the advice and consent of the board. And so you, somebody will make a motion to approve the mayor's, uh, appointment of Joe.
So I would make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Joe Cruz.
I'll second. You can call roll.
Alderman Eisenhower?
Yes.
Alderman Stokel?
Yes.
Alderman Whitmore?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Joe, for your seat. Now, we have to swear again.
Do we do that next meeting?
Unless you're ready to do it now?
No, I'm not ready, I don't know if you are, but I'm not.
Roger, I definitely want you to keep in mind, there's potentially some other positions on this board gonna be available in the near future. So we appreciate you stepping, stepping up and step up again. Okay. Discussion items, debriefing on July third.
Do you wanna start that, or do you want me to, or, Weiner, do you wanna talk about July third, from your perspective?
Can.
Okay. You start.
Okay, I'll start. So I submitted the after-action plan to McGee and his board to have the change. In my after-action plan, the only things that I highlighted were. We had our normal six officers, five other officers from the commercial vehicle enforcement unit. And their sergeant come out. They were able to handle traffic control, they've been Merrick Station thirteen hundred. And they cleared out this whole area before I could clear out the.
Church lot.
So I designated a minimum of ten officers for this firework display from now on. And it's, it's a minimum, it's getting, the amount of people, even with the rain throughout the day. Once the rain stopped, this place just filled up, and it's getting, this is gonna be our biggest problem area in the future. There's just so many people, I talked to a family that came in from High Ridge just to see the fireworks. And with next year being closer to the weekend, we're gonna have even more people next year. The use of the commercial vehicle units, I just touched on that. So on the s- what's it, the second, we roped off the two grass islands in the middle of Big Ben one forty-one. To keep people off there. That is something else that we need to keep doing, because that kept, I didn't have anybody try to go past the tape.
I wondered if people would.
Yeah, they didn't, we had the area roped off caution tape, and then two big signs on each island that said, keep out, and they did. Uh, so that helped with the traffic flow and safety there, so that's something that we're gonna have to keep doing. And then, I'd be brief with the commercial vehicle units, they had no issues up here, so that's good. They were able to clear out and keep this area under control and the traffic flowing, which was a big plus. Uh, we had no issues in the park, no issue at the park gate. My officer at the church, once they shut down the parking lot, because it was filled. Uh, he just basically sat up at the gate and then patrolled through the area, so that worked well. Those are the only points I noted in my after-action plan. Uh, but we're gonna have to have a minimum of ten officers, perhaps even more next year, because it's gonna be a big crowd next year.
Did the handicap parking spaces get used at the church?
Oh, yes, they did.
We need four.
Um, I didn't address that with my officer, I don't believe so, because the handicap spaces were used by placard handicap vehicles. However, a lot of people just parked in a regular spot and then stayed at their vehicle. Which that tends to be the majority of the people, who just tailgate the area.
Anything else?
Thanks for your efforts, went well from the police's point of view.
I think we had rave reviews from the general population, the feedback has been extremely popular. The music, uh, took a different twist this year with being broadcast on F M, and it seemed to have worked. We'll pursue that again in the future. I had feedback, people love the music, and I had a couple of comments that they would like a little more. Paint drive music mixed in, so we'll try and balance that out a little bit better next time around. Did we have any, uh. Food truck or anything left over at the church from the?
They usually, the only thing, and I don't know, because this is, this is the one year that I did not go up there, my other.
I believe they stayed open, didn't they, and sold out?
Yeah, they sold out, um.
I know they usually do like ice cream and whatever.
Well, they had the barbecue for the car show, that stayed open later, and I can't think of exactly what time they came over to me. But they said they had like three hot dogs left in the bus. And they offered to the officer and I that were on the parking lot, and that was later in the evening, they did have a, it was a snow cone truck.
They usually have a snow cone truck, yeah, and sometimes an ice cream truck, so.
Yeah, I don't remember any other, uh, food other than the barbecue and the, and the snow cone truck.
Should that be expanded next year?
That's really up to them.
Yes.
So, they, they do those things, um, I know that the, the money for the barbecue goes towards, um. The trip that their kids take, um, and.
The snow cones they just invite to.
Snow cones, they just, right, have come up there, so I know that, well, I, I, I know that when we talked with them after last year. We, we said something about the food, like it would be great if the food was there later, because people would probably eat it. So that may have been part of their planning, so it might, it might not be a bad idea to say to them.
I will say that Papa John's did reach out to me directly to ask if they could be involved as a vendor at any of the events. So I sent it over to Joe about Family Fun Day, maybe, to see if that was something that you guys wanted to pursue. But they were definitely interested in the third, because they know what the crowds are like, so. They, I think if we wanted to pursue having more options, I do think there would be a lot of restaurants that would take us up on it, you know?
Ice cream truck, which was very popular.
Right, we did used to do that, yes, yes, yes.
So, and a lot of those vendors too, you know, will, they're used to having a percentage that they have to give back or donate to something. So, and a lot of those vendors too, you know, will, they're used to having a percentage that they have to give back or donate to something if, you know, so.
Yeah, we used to do it where, where we didn't need them and towards the end, we started, like we only went with people who were going to give a percentage to.
We don't need to pay them to go. Require them.
And we usually just made it some sort of, you know, like a charity or backstuffers and whatnot, but we've done different ones.
Yeah, we keep it a charity or something, sure. Right. Right.
And so I, you know, I would leave it that way again.
Yeah, for sure.
Because I know that that, let me feel good about spending that.
Restrooms, we have enough porta potties seem to handle.
From what John said, that went very smoothly. They put them all in the right spots, right? And, you know.
They did have a restroom malfunction.
Yeah.
At the park.
Yeah, was the one that's.
They ran out of paper towels.
Oh, yeah.
Wait a little bit longer.
Yeah.
That was the only issue I had.
The men's restroom went out.
Yeah, that was the one in the park, not the porta potty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it seemed there weren't any big lines or anything like that.
I feel less than in your town.
Everything, everything was, was going so smoothly. And I even made a comment to people I was with, this is the first July 3rd where I wasn't uptight before the fireworks went off. And so it got to be about twenty-five to nine. And I'm looking down at that basketball court and they're running around like crazy and there's a big trailer down there. And nothing seems to be happening and nothing is happening. It gets to be quarter to nine and there's still nothing happening down there. And they, they didn't set up the table yet, you know, to fire the fireworks and I thought something's wrong. So sure enough, I sent one of the policemen down and it came back and he said, the trailer hitch on the trailer broke. And they couldn't move the trailer away, but they got it out at the last minute. They needed ten extra minutes to set up the firing station. So everything went off at nine-ten, so that was good.
No one was the wiser.
Yeah, had to have that last minute stress factor.
Somebody knew that.
Right.
The quality of the speakers used to be better than ever.
Yes.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
Well, he had more.
All the way to the back of the park.
Yeah. I think he put them further back than he did last year.
And he had two more.
There were some all the way back, it's almost to the gazebo and I don't think they had been back.
I can hear the minutes that I got it.
Yeah, that far before. So that was great, yeah.
The display was outstanding. Yeah, it just went really well.
Do we have a multi-year contract?
With the fireworks company? I, no, we do not yet. I think we're on year-to-year at this point, yeah.
We definitely did.
This is, this was our second year with them, correct?
Well, they did a great job.
Yeah.
Really good.
Yeah.
And they would love to come back. They certainly said that as soon as they were done.
Good. Lathan and Holmes was good. I think everybody enjoyed them. They're also very cooperative to work with. Some of the bands don't like to hang around after the fireworks and that creates a problem. Don't think it all went well.
Okay.
Okay.
Banking?
Yeah, we talked about our meeting with Enterprise and we talked about our, the funds that we have in the bank. And could there be a way to have them invest our money in a more returnable fashion? We're not getting that much return currently on our money that we're holding in there. So they did come back to us with some recommendations, which April will go over with you.
Yeah, this was just kind of their first stab at it. She just said this is kind of quickly what they could, they would recommend. There's obviously more options than this, but this would be sort of the easiest thing for us to do as a first step if we wanted to. And obviously we can engage other banks. We can find out some other options, but Enterprise is our main bank, so it's the easiest to kind of go with them. So she just listed out kind of where, what we have now and then what we could potentially have, you know, would be a little bit more fees, but significantly more interest. So just, I wanted you guys to see it so that you could be thinking about that. And then, you know, we'll obviously pursue some other options so that we have something more concrete to look at and a little bit of, you know, competitiveness there.
So does Enterprise have a brokerage then, company or do they go outside?
No, I think this is all just, you know, within their kind of money market type stuff. It's not, it's not a brokered, yeah.
Stocks.
I think legally, a question for Paul and Dave, are there any restrictions on how we can invest this?
Yeah, we can't have it in anything, yeah.
Ah, you have to put it into high-risk Chinese stuff.
Yeah, right.
No, there's totally a lot and mainly you need to be in something that's, you know, backed by the FDIC or, or, or a, an agreement with your bank that they will collateralize the investment. So like with the C D or something like that. So, yeah, it'd be, and you have a, a policy that's in your, in your code book and all that, which mirrors almost, you know, perfectly the state of Missouri's policy. There are, there are groups, MOSIP and others out there that do a lot of investments on behalf of cities. And they started with school districts, so you could look into something like that. Don't ask me what MOSIP stands for.
MOSIP, Missouri Securities Management Program.
There you go.
It's on the board with four of them and it's, it's an alternative.
Yeah.
So, yes, there are ways that we can get more for our dollars.
You could be a little aggressive with some of it and less aggressive.
Yeah, it's mainly based on, you know, the cash flow.
The aggressive nature would be going up on your terms.
Right.
But everything has to be guaranteed by the full faith and credit of the United States government or, or instrumentality there. It's our FDIC. It was, it's, it's almost guarantee, as far as guarantee. The rates are probably going to drop here in a couple of months. Some of these are tied to Fed funds and the Fed fund rate is almost the, they're almost assuredly going to drop the rates here soon. So probably we want to move on this.
Soon or later.
By our next meeting, we should have something, can we target five percent or something to expect?
I mean, the main thing you understand is how much can you, how long can you go out and what money can you not touch for thirteen months or twelve months or whatever? So that's, what the rate is, we'll get the highest rate, but it's really the, the question is what can you not touch for, you know, that extended period?
Because almost all of that, you're putting it aside saying you just keep this for the same.
Right, exactly.
In liquidity, that's what I meant by not touch.
So, yeah, we would need to look closely.
We have to cut the legal fees.
But right now the, the investment policy restricts it to three percent. I didn't report it tied up that long anyway.
No. So what, what would you like to see at the next meeting then? Do you want Dave's recommendations about the best option for us? Or what, what are you exactly wanting for the next meeting?
Yeah, and I think having an idea of what money, based on budget, based on.
Yeah.
How much we need access to.
Pretty much you think we can have, okay.
Like how much can we put into something like that?
Yeah. The simple way of looking at it is the latter end, basically get CDs that mature at different times. You've always got something maturing, so you don't have, you have the, the cash flow coming back.
Okay.
And you're, and you're not risking a lot of, of interest rates declining and you have to be invested.
So can you prepare something for us?
Yeah, I'll work with the info and we'll.
Okay, great.
That would be wonderful.
Sure. I think we could probably look between MOSIP and what Enterprise has given us.
Yeah, MOSIP's a big deal to get involved. So I think dip your toe in the pool by getting these better ones and then that's for like next year.
Okay.
It's, you gotta go through all kinds of resolutions and ordinances and stuff.
Okay.
So that'll be August seventh.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, attorney's report.
No reports, man.
No report. No check, no report. City clerk report.
Okay, somehow I didn't manage to bring my paper copy and it's not in here, so I'm just gonna remember it from my brain.
Here.
So the, did you get one? No, thanks, Dennis. Perfect. I could have remembered this probably though. So a couple of general updates that we're doing, just kind of admin. We're switching over our payroll processing, not processing, the timesheet reporting. So we have been doing paper timesheets. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, but that's how the staff has been submitting their hours. So it's twenty-twenty-four. I think we're ready for something a little bit more modern. So we have Paylocity already in place. I know that has a, an app where they can clock in, clock out if they want or put their hours in that way. And then it will feed directly already into our payroll system. So that's something that we're working on right now, getting up and running. So, yeah, it may take a couple of weeks because it's their, they're slow on there and not because we're slow. But anyway, that's coming down the pike and I think would be very helpful for everybody. We're also looking at, and one thing I would like to challenge you guys to do. If you are a homeowner and you go to our website and you want to, Lisa just did this, file for a building permit. I want you guys to try to navigate our website and see if you can figure out what you need for a building permit, what you need. Because I think we could be a lot more user-friendly. So I would love to get your feedback on, I'd like to update all of our forms so that they actually show the fees and don't just direct people to the code to try to interpret the code and figure out what the fee is.
Also, is there a way, and I'm sure there is, so I went on there and it was not a fillable form and it couldn't be emailed from the website.
Right.
And I was like, well, I could have went up to City Hall and filled this out.
Exactly. So, yeah, modernizing those forms and making it a whole lot more user-friendly. I'd like to go, right now we sort of have that how do I section?
Yeah.
And it just says, how do I apply for a permit? And it has a list of the permits. Okay, well, people need to understand, when do I need a permit?
Yeah.
You know, what is, what are the steps? You know, if I fill out this permit and I bring it up to City Hall, then what do I do after that? What's my next step? So that's kind of what I'm going to focus on as soon as we're sort of out of this busy period when we have less going on and we can kind of go through those one by one. But I would love your feedback if you want to look at it from a homeowner's perspective and just say, hey, if I were to fill this out, could I figure this out on my own? And then let me know what you think about that because I definitely want to make those updates. And then I said this last month, but I'll say it again, National Night Out is on August sixth and we have cool times booked for free ice cream in the park.
Is it six, start?
Six-thirty. Yeah, six-thirty start. And so it'll be, we'll have full times down there from six-thirty to seven-thirty for one hour. And Paul and I are working on some kind of, either a giveaway or something that lets people kind of know what we're doing down there. That was the big issue last year. I felt like people were like, what is happening? What is this? Why is there free ice cream in the park? So we're going to make a more concerted effort to publicize National Night Out, what it is, why we do it. Obviously Officer Weiner is going to be down there. We might have Valley Park Fire Department down there, so.
Dump tank for the new Alderman?
Hmm, sure, yeah. I could be into that. That sounds great.
He's ignoring me.
So a big one from this week is that we had the pre-construction meeting, so for project updates. We had the pre-construction meeting for the stormwater and sidewalk improvements. So that was Tuesday. So they are doing a tentative timeline starting first week in September. And they may do some preliminary work, removing trees and things like that that are less disruptive earlier than that. But I'm still getting the finalized more firm timeline, but everybody was really excited to get the project going. So I think we'll be, and, and obviously, once they start, they've got sixty days to complete it. So that puts us, you know, November being completed with the project, so.
All utilities finally got moved?
They are either, they got moved or they are still in progress of getting moved. So A T and T had a little hiccup with, they did not run enough line over there. So they are going to have to work sort of in tandem, the contractors working with them to, they can be out there kind of moving their things while they're doing some work. So there may be, you know, small changes, like we may have to put some handholds in the, to be able to access A T and T lines in the sidewalk. But that's pretty common in a lot of places, so, yeah. So that's really exciting that we're going to have some kind of like actual movement, dirt moving soon, which is really exciting. So, and then the park grant, obviously you guys saw the public hearing and Jennifer kind of went over the timeline for that. So obviously this is, since we decided to push it back a year, you can just push all these dates back on this timeline by a year. So it would be, you know, spring twenty-twenty-six construction before we were able to get into that. And then Tiffany is still working on, she did send some preliminary cost estimates for the Bowley Lane entrance. So we have been working on that for a number of years. And so we already have plans in terms of narrowing that median and changing the, putting a crosswalk in there. The thing that was kind of holding us up was getting the crosswalk maintenance agreement in place with the county. So, but I think we have that pretty much hammered out now. So hopefully we'll have some closer cost estimates and then we can go out to bid for that for construction in spring. So probably wouldn't go out to the top.
Nicole Miller.
Yeah.
Has volunteered that whenever we get that project going.
Yep.
And we get it finished, she is willing to work with us to tell us how and what we need to fill in there to make sure we have a good bid for the plants that go in there.
Oh, good, okay, great. Yeah, that'll be helpful. So, yeah, that's all I have. Any questions?
Okay. I don't know if you've seen it, but Bartolino's has a really neat video out and it's Serantino, is that his name?
Serincino, Serincino.
He, he's doing a, a little tour through, through the spaces and showing, showing the actual space, but also showing the.
Drawings.
The graphics of what it's going to look like and talking about it. Very nice, very nice video. He's, he says in the video, he's talking about fall opening. I heard maybe a little bit sooner than that. Also, we have the plans for the coffee house. It's called Rosemary Coffee.
Rosemary Coffee, yes.
The plans that are currently under review by B F A and then Algo de County, so that should be, should be starting up pretty soon. And April and I will be working some of the stormwater issues. I think we decided that instead of getting B F A involved, we're going to go out and make sure we look at what's being, what areas that people are being concerned about. And we look at it to try to really define what is the problem? Do we need B F A in here to do that and so forth, so.
Can you let us know when you're going to do that or maybe we'll tag along some of this?
Yeah.
I know I will not.
Yeah.
We're just kind of taking it as a case-by-case basis. So when I sent out that email, I did say, you know, please reach out to City Hall if you, really, I was more talking about inlets that are clogged and things like that. But if people do have things that they want to look, us to look at, you know, I would rather, like we said, us to take a look at it first. Make sure that it's even, you know, an issue that we can take on as the city or if it's something the homeowner has to do themselves. I think some homeowners are just kind of looking, even if it's on their property, they're just looking for some kind of guidance on who they should reach out to, to take care of an issue like that. So we may just be able to give them some suggestions of engineers or contractors that they can talk to directly, so.
I was out in the storm at its worst and observed a lot and learned a lot and caused me to question certain things. One was the berm at the church was overflowed. Now, in that type of rainstorm, you can probably expect that. But it did raise a question, is it compromised anywhere? We haven't inspected it since it went in. Is it compromised? Is it still the same height? Something that we probably should look at.
It has been four years since the berm went in.
A lot of gutter, downspout issues. I met with M S D this morning in the condominium area and we were looking at the, the one condominium with the sloped driveway. And I noticed that there, there are compounding issues at that condominium that either the association needs to take care of or the owner needs to take care of. They have two downspouts dumping right at the bottom of the garage door. And there's four thousand gallons and that four-inch rain, there's four thousand gallons hitting that roof up there, needing to go somewhere. And it's dumping it down into that drain and it's overloading the drain. And M S D agreed that that drain is not big enough to handle the water coming down there, so. And M S D is looking at some other things associated with the drain, but the, the major things. But there's a lot of stuff residents can do to help themselves, which would have made it better. There's some things we as a city need to be on top of. Those storm drains alter important, make sure they get inspected frequently. Those storm drains, alter important, make sure they get inspected frequently. Over on Crescent Road, we had the same issue. One of the culverts in one of those driveways over there where that water flows down was totally blocked up, and it flooded the road. The road was closed. The stream coming down from the condominiums was full. I mean, it was flowing like crazy. I've never seen anything like that. And we get down to the bottom of our stream there by Crescent Road, and then we expect it to make a ninety-degree turn into a small ditch, and then on, onto the Fish Pot Creek, you know, down, down that way. In that type of rain, that's an issue. And so, that road was, I couldn't drive through it. It was, but mainly, mainly things I want to look at is that berm. We had, we had the issues on autumn leaf again. It didn't surprise me, but we need to make sure that berm is in good shape. And I'm going to talk to the condo board tomorrow, and we're going to talk about some things that either the management company should do, that they need to take care of with the building. And hopefully, they'll be receptive to that because it is contributing to a lot of the water that they had standing back there. It wasn't tremendous. It handled it pretty well, but there were a couple, couple condos that got water for sure. So, at any rate, and we're going to be working through the stormwater thing, and, but all in all, I think as a city, we were probably luckier than a lot, than a lot. Okay, that's all I have. Lisa? Yep?
No, I really don't think I do, thank you.
Dennis?
Look at Joe.
Get it? Okay. Any final citizen comments? Any final citizen comments? Thanks, Jim, for coming. I have a need for a sharp closed session tonight. So, I better put my glasses on. I'm going to need a motion. Upon motion duly made and seconded, the Board of Aldermen will hold a closed session pursuant to Chapter six-ten R S M O for the reasons specifically set forth in Section six-ten dot oh twenty-one, including but not limited to discussion pertaining to one, legal actions, causes of actions and litigation or confidential communications with the city's attorney, and hiring, firing, disfining, or promoting a particular employee's by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed as recorded.
I will make that motion.
I'll second. Paul Rowe, please.
Alderman Eisenhower?
Yes.
Alderman Skokel?
Yes.
Alderman Whitmore?
Yes.
Okay, we will now go into closed session.